All right. Here we go. Auto order the town of Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for June twenty six, twenty twenty four. Welcome aboard. All right. Everybody good? Feeling good? All right. So, um, let's, let's get going here. I'll start off with some introductions on William Hanley. I'm. Land Board Chair. We've got Vice Chair Casey Loftus Keller, Gail Marshall, Alan Kimerly, and alternate member Ann Dalton. And just, um, probably the first quarter of the evening is where I'm not seeing Meredith here with us yet. And I talked to her earlier and she was kind of feeling under the weather. I don't think she's gonna make it, so we should, we should probably vote.
I know, I remember.
Check it out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome aboard, Ann. And then, uh, just. For those of us out in Zoom world, Sydney. We all know the routine by now. Just sign in on chat. You know, raise your hand. We'll keep, if there's, if you've got anything to say during public comment and I'll. Let you speak and, um. Let's keep going. So you've got minutes tonight. We had the minutes from the Asta Co hearing and that was on the twelfth.
I will provoke a moment.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty, so. We have the same advocate here tonight, three times. So, let's, um. We're, we're just gonna roll through it as, as the agenda was laid out in this, um, first one, uh, I have three as a conditional use approval application and just. Bear with me as I introduce it. So we have, um, conditional use approval application, oh, oh, seventh, twenty twenty four. Name is, uh, Northeast Harbor Fleet Incorporated, Agent and is currently endorsed the Engineering and Serving Incorporated, William Gartley, P E. Gatley. Um, location is forty eight South Shore Road, Northeast Harbor, Tax Map twenty three lot for. The zone is Shoreland Residential One and the purpose of this application is section three point four, commercial recreational outdoor recreation facilities such as tennis, golf, boating and swimming. Reconstruct and elevate a new marine structure, shoreline stabilization and a new retaining wall. Uh, we had a site inspection at five and was this one advertised and?
Uh, well, a butters were notified. Um, there's three, uh, butters and then you have the information.
Checklist upon checklist and a public notice.
Okay. Public notice was in the Mount Desert Islander and the Ellsworth American on. June. That's it.
I don't think my reading lasted. June thirteenth. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so. Let's first hear about the site inspection. Alan, would you like to?
Sure.
Report on that?
Basically, what, uh, we saw when we went there is. Everything's going to be moving up and back from the water. With the way everything's been going on, I guess that's a, uh, wise thing to do. It all seemed, uh, pretty much straightforward. The dock's gonna get a little wider. We were told, uh, it was so two carts could come opposing each other. To, uh, not have traffic jams with the dock being. Think, uh, two hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and thirty-six feet long. And some trees are gonna go away. Which, uh, I guess that's life for a tree when there's building. Going on, but, uh, some of it's going to be retained. The original seawall. Uh, just in front of the club is going to remain as it abuts with the neighbors. And a secondary seawall will be built behind that, I believe. To, uh, help with our rising water that we all have to deal with. And the dock house is going to. Uh, be up. Above the height of the dock slightly and on its own structure. So that will. If once, I can see how, if one structure will go, then the other one may not be affected. With any nasty storm that they make it. And it all seemed, you know, like. You know, good, reasonable things that need to be done with our changing point.
Gail, anything to add?
The shoreline is substantially eroded, um, inboard of the facility and that. Is going to retain all this there, the, the large granite blocks are gonna be repurposed elsewhere and there's the seawall itself is gonna be. Probably more properly built with riprap. Along with that shoreline.
Tracy.
Um. Just say that the, the, um. With the, the, the primary, um, structure, the buil- building is being moved back. Um, sort of further up the lawn. To protect the building and a bit last longer and longer. But also. On the same purpose path as everything else.
Ann, observations?
Looks like an interesting project, the flag pole area, which had some substantial damage with the storm underneath is going to be, um, lifted up, stays in the same place, but. Reconstructed around, uh, that pole and also their, um, uh, changing area bathroom facility stays put. While everything else moves around it.
I think it's nice that they're saving an old building. I know it's probably be cheaper if you tore it down and just built another, but they ask me this to be that.
So just some organizational information here, the, what you guys reporting on the, um, the site inspection, we. We talked about all three aspects of the project, but just for, um, parsing this for the record. Um, you know, we have three distinct applications here, so and right now we're talking about the. Elevating the new marine structure, the, in the shoreline stabilization and the new retaining wall, so. Um, as the, as we move into that, let's stay focused on that and then we'll parse the other. Two applications as we get to them, just so the record's clear and especially for this public, so. With that. Mr. Gatley, you're on.
Well, you guys did a good job summarizing. Thank you. Uh, as you mentioned, I'm Will Gertley, representing the fleet. Um, and, um, we've given you a lot of information and I, um, there's the conditional use application, which is what we're gonna be going through first. Um, we have plans in here that show all the site improvements. There's an existing condition survey that shows exactly what's there today compared to what, what we're proposing. And, um, we've submitted applications to the D E P and Army Corps. The Army Corps focus is the pier structure, everything that's below the highest annual timeline. And, uh, the D E P's focus overlaps that. They're also looking at, um, the pier and everything that's out in the water. Along with Department of Marine Resources, inland fisheries and wildlife. Um, but the D E P is also looking at everything that's within seventy-five feet of the high water line, so that includes all of our shoreline stabilization, the drainage, the, uh, erosion control. Uh, their scope is. Overlaps yours. And so we've got a lot of information here. Um, I have a letter from A N S R Preservation, they were notified and, uh, we're happy that the buildings, you saved also, uh, but they had no issues with what we proposed. You know? We, uh, spent a fair amount of time looking at the history, the site and, uh, the lot coverage and I provided you with a plan. The fleet has, uh. Provided us with a lot of historical information so that we could try to figure out what, um, has happened since nineteen seventy-eight, which is when the shoreline zoning ordinance went into effect. Um, and to understand what is grandfathered for lot coverage and what isn't, and so. I provided people with a plan and a lot of photographs and explanation, excuse me, of how we got there. And we worked really hard to keep the proposed, uh, project within that limit. Uh, we talked about the building height on site. Again, we had to make sure we, uh, were under twenty feet measured from the, made a original grade on the low side of the building.
Remember, we're just talking about the marine structure and the shoreline stabilization at the moment. You are.
So as far as the marine structure goes, we're, um, raising that to elevation thirteen point eight, which is a little over three feet higher than what it is now. The captain shack fifteen, and I did mention when we were on site that that's gonna be on its own independent structure. From a distance, you won't be able to tell that, but it will be, um, and the pier is being widened from six feet to ten feet to allow, uh, two people to pass and, and carts to more easily maneuver. The long distance out to the. To the gangway. Uh, we talked about the elevation that we chose, um, to be above flood. Um, but also aesthetically not to be too drastically different than what's there now and also to make sure that the gangways aren't overly steep at low tide.
Ready? No, I'll. Open it up for any. Public comment. Now's your chance, Sydney.
Are you serious?
Yeah. Yeah, so again, Sydney, we're just reviewing the marine structure and shoreline stabilization. At this time, so any questions relative to that? Go for it.
I do not. I only have questions relative to one hundred years from now.
Yes, don't we all? Right, any? Any other public comment? Questions? Go once.
If you want me to tell you what I think, why don't I just say it, okay?
Just go, Sydney, as long as it's relative to the pier and shoreline stabilization.
It's relative to the fleet building.
Okay, well, that's the next application. Can we, can we talk about the fleet building on the next application?
I have, I've muted myself.
All right, so if, if your question's about the building, let's, let's just keep the record. Clean and talk about that when we get there, but, um, anything on the pier or the shoreline stabilization? Let us know. All right, I'm not hearing any further public comments, so we'll close that and let's, um. Soldier on here, so the first thing I'd ask is, um, you know, how the board feels about finding the application complete?
I move to find the application complete.
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? And then, uh, how would you guys feel about considering using the short form checklist for this?
Absolutely.
I move we use the short form checklist.
Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I. And then we do our weird little procedural thing where, um. Motion to approve the application.
I move we approve the application.
Second.
Right, then we press the pause button and we review the application, so. Let's all make sure we're aligned here with what we're looking at. I got the short form checklist in front of me. I've got the, the application from the applicant. And, um. And we're gonna be going through section six A B and C and section five point nine and land use ordinance, you can have that open too and, um, you know, as we get into, um. And, you know, we're specifically reviewing the marine structure, so that's gonna be in section six C, six C point seven, so let's. Let's do this. Right. Section six A one compatibility. The applicant talks about the lot size. It was point five one acres, the size of the pier will only change slightly, the replacement pier is ten by two hundred and twenty-five and a half feet. And sixty-four by twenty-four, which are both four foot wider than existing elevated from ten point four feet to thirteen point eight. Uh, the building is staying a similar size and, yeah, that's next and the. Existing, yeah, you know, the visual impact, it's an existing facility. You know, the aesthetics of the pier riprap, building and site improvements will. Blend into the existing district. Proximity to other structures, no significant change, density of development, no significant change. So six A one compatibility, see application. We.
I have a question about one aspect of it.
Yeah.
And it also is gonna be covered later on the dock. So I don't know where you would rather handle it.
Yeah, any dock specifics, let's drill down to six C seven.
Okay.
Handle that. Six A two erosion sedimentation control. Well, the applicant talks about the erosion control practices are part of the N R P application that the. B P and Army Corps, they've got landscape plan, site plan and civil details and erosion sedimentation control notes, so. See application. Highway safety. And say no change to historical use, so see application. Impact on town services, six A four. Services staying similar to existing impact on services. See application. Six A five land suitability. Proposed improvements will improve the resiliency of the structure, property, protect shoreline and add vegetation. See application. Six A six lighting outdoor. Say applicable standard mat, couch sheets are provided for the building mounted lights. Are there lights on the pier? Or the marine structure?
Is there light?
There's a light.
There is currently a light.
Yeah, there's current.
All right, see application. Six A seven stormwater. We talk about surface runoff close, the ocean was aggressively and southerly shore pattern will continue. Stone drip edges adjacent to the building, we talked about that later, new plantings being added. And they have stormwater management details submitted, so see application vegetation. Say applicable standard mat, see landscape plan. See application, six A nine dust fumes, odors and gases, say applicable standard mat, care will be taken during construction to control dust.
Do I presume that means watering when needed?
Yeah, there actually shouldn't be a lot of exposed area, that'll be the newfound, I mean, not relative to the pier and shoreline.
Right.
Mostly with the. Building itself.
Right, the findings of fact are presented.
So that's the application.
Yes, sorry. The findings of fact are that they are as presented by the applicant and attached application and the conclusion laws of proposed uses in compliance with. All standards of section six A for which the standard has been, uh.
So moved. Second.
Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on, section six B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. Agriculture, N A. And we still have air landing sites on the checklist. N A. Six B seven excavation. Uh, applicant says they got a site plan C one and civil details C six for new grading. So, see application. Fences and walls. That they, there's no new fences proposed, but they've got the retaining wall information shown. See applications, six B sixteen sign regulations. N A. Six B eighteen wireless communication facilities, N A. Six B nineteen animal husbandry two, N A. Six B twenty mobile food vendors, N A, six B twenty-one rooming house, N A, and six B twenty-two hotels and motels, N A. So the findings or fact are that the proposed use will include none of, none of the specific activities or land uses described in section six B except for. Six B seven and six B eight. In the conclusion while section six B is not applicable except for section six B seven and six B eight, which the standard has been met.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Okay. So. Now's kind of the meat of the review. Section six, uh, six B. Was getting aligned here in the application. All right, section sixty is shoreline zoning standards for reviewed by the planning board. Six C one agriculture, N A. Six C two archaeological sites. Apron says there are no known archaeological sites in. M H P C and the state tribes have been noticed of the planned construction. See application. Sixty-five. Essential services. N A. Section sixty-six. N A, I mean, again, we're talking about a pier and a. Retaining wall. Right, such as six C seven marine and freshwater structure standards. Gail, you have a question?
I did. Um, somebody's gonna need to help me understand. How the proposal particularly to increase this from six feet to ten feet. Complies with the dimensional limits and six. And six C seven twelve. Which, as I understand, it says the maximum width of the pier walkway will be six feet. Twelve through fifteen don't apply to commercial or public nor instructions. That answers that question. Thank you.
So applicant talks about that, the, you know, we've got the attached plans for compliance one through twelve above, um. As a commercial facility and it's exempt.
So, so just to clarify, when the. The application itself says that, that, that they're showing compliance of one through twelve. And as a commercial facility, the project is exempt from thirteen through sixteen, it should have actually said twelve through sixteen. Okay, thank, yeah. That's what's really.
Yeah, and some of the, just so the board. Is familiar with this, so, um, just bear with me, but. You know, the, we have specific performance standards for marine structures and we taught, you know, and some of those are defined as access from shore. Interference with existing uses, effect on fisheries, size, no new structures, new permanent peers and docks, diversion dwellings, height limit. Uh, interference with natural flow, approachment on navigation, mooring area, dimensional limits, additional square footage for floats, communal dock, limited number. And. That's, uh. That's technically fifty.
Right.
Then, that no discrepancies, the conditional use application that was online is actually different than the one. You know, when I first opened this out, I was going by the one that's online and the, and the numbers are, are different than. What is now the most up to date.
Are those one for the land use advisory? All right. Okay, does it have a meeting till September? All right, so applicant says applicable standard mat, are there any other questions for the applicant on the marine structure? None heard. See application. Roads and driveways. N A. Water quality. Apron says applicable standard mat, they've got a site plan C one, civil detail C six and the corrosion sedimentation control notes. See application. So the findings fact are that the proposed use include none of the specific activities and land you uses described in section sixty except for. Six C two. Six C seven, six C eleven. Conclusion laws that section sixty is not applicable except for sixty to sixty-seven and sixty-eleven, which the standard has been met.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, because we are in the shoreline zone, we have to do section five nine. Right, and. Let's do it. Five nine one will maintain safe and healthful conditions. See application, five nine two will not result in water pollution, erosion or sedimentation to surface waters. See application. Five nine three will adequately provide for disposal of all wastewater. See application. Do you even have wastewater?
Yes, it's a, well, it comes up to this, well, the, to read in the street.
Five nine four will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. See application. Five nine five will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. See application. Five nine six will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated on the comp plan. See application. Five nine seven will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing or maritime activities in a shoreline commercial district. You guys aren't in a shoreline commercial district. Technically, that should be N A. So I'm saying, and Heidi.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Uh, five nine eight will avoid problems associated with floodplain development use, that's one of the main reasons we're here. See application. Is in conformance with the provisions of section six A, B and C. Standard is met. Findings of fact are at C above and the conclusion was that all requirements section. Five nine, five point nine have been met.
So moved. So that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, permit conditions like the. B P and, uh. Army Corps, uh. Those are all in process. We need to specifically make that a permit condition or is that a?
I won't.
Yeah.
You haven't passed many time.
Yeah. Well, Heidi, you got that?
Uh, you said D E P.
Yep, yeah, yes. Did you want some?
Now, is there any other permitting outstanding?
Not permitting, there is a submerged land lease.
No, there's that one.
Yeah. So we're gonna need that too.
That's in process.
Yeah, all three of those are in process.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so we've got those three primary conditions. Alright, now we circled back to our E track player. Plus play. Again, all those in favor of approving the application? I oppose. Alright, application number one, congrats.
Thank you.
Alright, so the, the next two applications. Are not conditional use app- applications. And uh, the second one tonight and uh. Just bear with me. Is section four point three point six reconstruction or replacement, just all that. Read through this, so this talks about the um, non-conforming structures. And non-conforming structures which are located less than the required setback from the water body. Uh, and which is removed, damaged or destroyed regardless of cause by more than fifty percent of the market value. Of the structure for such damage, the structural removal may be reconsidered, reconstructed, sorry. Or replaced provided that permit is obtained within eighteen months and the day of the said damage, destruction or removal. Provided that the. Provided that such reconstruction replacement is in compliance with the water body setback requirement to the greatest practical extent. We'll probably be hearing that phrase a couple of times. Um, as determined by the planning boarding in accordance with section four point three five. An appraiser must make the determination of market value as defined in the structure. No case shall a structure be reconstructed or repl- replaced to increase its non-conformity. Then if the reconstructed replacing structure is less than the required setback, it shall not be any larger. Than the original structure except as allowed pursuant to section four point three point two above. As determined by the non-conforming footprint of the reconstructed replaced structure at its new location. But the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed beyond the required setback area. No portion of the relocated reconstructed structure shall be replaced. Or constructed at less than the setback requirement for a new structure. So. African name is Northeast Harbor Fleet Incorporated, agent is. Is it Gartley or?
It's Gartley.
It's Gartley. So they've got it both here, so the agent is Gartley and Dorsky Engineering and surveying. William Gartley P eight is the agent. Um, location forty eight South Shore Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map twenty three lot four. Shoreline residential one is the zone. And we are specifically talking about the reconstruction of the concrete slab around the flagpole. And was this one advertised and a butter's notified?
I'm not sure if we had all them the same.
It was probably on the same one.
As June thirteenth.
Yeah. And you have the butter says there.
Yes.
You're good to go on that and. Mister Gartley, perhaps you just kind of talk about the scope of this project quickly and.
Yes, so the, the um. The raising of the pier, the raising of the building also uh, results in bringing the grade up. From the road to the building and then the building to the pier. Uh, which means that the flagpole is gonna be three or four feet below. So um, in order to uh, update that, make it uh, kind of blend in and look the way it does today. Um, that entire. Wall that circles the flagpole area is gonna be reconstructed with cast and placed concrete wall. Um, and faced with stone to have a similar look. And the flagpole will be elevated also. Uh, that existing concrete slab was almost completely undermined during those January storms, uh, they did a good job repairing it for the season. Uh, but that definitely needs to be changed, so put a new basin for the flagpole. Elevate that and then instead of replacing that with concrete, we're proposing to just put um, stepping stones. Get around there, because it does, it's a high traffic area.
Alright, I'll open it for public comment. Sydney, any questions on the flagpole? Your hand is up.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I cannot quite picture what's, what stepping stones look around the flagpole. Is, is it where the concrete is, is it, are we sitting on the stepping stones, help me out?
Here and landscape architect in attendance. Maybe we can kind of aim or at some of the images and maybe more of a description of what that is.
So yes, right now it's, it's just a completely concrete slab. And um, the intent is to have a surface that is durable and walkable and isn't gonna wear. Uh, but not have it be just a concrete slab. So the idea is to have some stones that are, you know, kind of cut fit together, there'll be gaps between those. And uh, and we're talking about really just that concrete slab and the stones. Flagpole is not considered a structure, so that's allowed to stay there. Um, so it's really just what is that surface inside that circular wall and out of the flagpole?
Is it like blue stone or granite or?
Yeah, granite, it's great.
Deep granite, gravel between your stomachs and between it.
Yeah.
So be more keeping with the backular.
And the walk, it'll match the walkway better and it'll also allow for drainage, I don't know if you noticed while we were there, I did point it out, but there is a, a drains in that concrete slab. And a little bit of a depression. Um, and so this will just allow the water to go through and then we'll have drainage underneath behind the concrete wall.
Sydney, you spot?
Thank you.
That answers it?
Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions from the public about the flagpole and its. Surrounding area? You still have your hand up, Sydney. Alright. So I'm not hearing any, any, so I'm gonna close public comments and um. First thing, just procedurally, this is not a conditional use application and. These are always. Little bit of gray territory here with, with these, but um, yeah, and that was one reason why I wrote this PhD dissertation at the beginning. But um. You know, one of, one of the first things is that um. You know, there. This is a, this is a reconstruction as a result of. The proposed changes for the building. Relocation and construction, because the, the grades coming up so high, you guys have to lift this. So this is not a case of like where this was damaged or destroyed. It's.
Right, and we did look at giving it, I mean, there is some history of us there, um, but to have that. Depressed three to four feet below the walkway and the access to the pier and how close it is to that. Just didn't seem to make sense, we would have to add stairs down into it, um. And then after the January storms, that kind of made us rethink it and look at. Building a wall that we know is gonna last into the future and bringing that elevation up so that it matches the walkway and the access to the pier.
Well, that all makes practical sense, but how do we make it work with the?
Well, I'm getting there, so. So it's just kind of taking some ginger steps here, but um. So where it's not damaged due to the storm and um, essentially again, re- a result of, you know, the, the building activity. Uh, Kim, what it had then is, is the fifty percent of the market value and the appraisal of. This structure than even relative?
I mean, it's being rebuilt completely.
Yeah.
It's completely gone, I mean, it's. Necessary because it's going completely away.
Yeah.
Being rebuilt.
Exactly, so more to understand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, I mean, I think it's purely a structure based on the definition, the definition of a structure in the shoreline zone is anything built on. In or above the ground. And it's similar to the walkways, right, the walkways are gonna be allowed to go to the pier because. We have to have access to the pier. The area around the flagpole gives us an access to the flagpole, if we weren't allowed to put the stepping stones in and that had to be grass. Then it's likely gonna get worn and have to be redone every year because of the amount of traffic on it, so I look at it very similar to the walkway to the pier. That it, it can't be moved back any further because flagpole is allowed to be there and access to the flagpole is needed.
So that um. So we got the, the market value fifty percent thing is just, that's not even relative.
It will concede that.
Yeah. Then, um, so what you guys should be looking at is so um. Section four point three five, the land use, and that's where we get into um. The uh, review criteria in the context of um. The greatest practical extent.
I'm page four four.
Yeah, so. So jumping down to four, three, five, you know, and, and the second paragraph that talks about in determining whether the building relocation. Needs a setback, the greatest practical extent, and here we're talking about a structure. And then, and again, it's the. It's the granite pavers uh, around the flagpole. Um, it talks about that the plan board or code enforcement officer shall consider the site. The, these are the review criteria that um, we are putting. Putting the application in context with, uh, and so they talked about the size of the lot, the slope of the land. The potential for soil raising, the location of other structures on the property and adjacent properties. The location of septic system and other onsite soil suitable for septic systems. And the type and amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish the relocation, so we're, we're, we're not relocating it.
We're asking that should be located.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I think the board should think about that, you know, where. We are talking about a reconstruction. I think it's, it's, it's really relative then to sections four point three point six reconstruction. And what. What that talks about is that if it's less than the required setback, it's not any larger than the original structure. You guys aren't expanding it, right? So, exact footprint. And you've submitted. The, the existing conditions and the proposed and to evidence that. And, you know, if the, you know, they talk about if the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed. Beyond the required setback, well, it's, it's really. Location specific, because you've got the flagpole there and the flagpole is um. Allowed to be there. I think, you know, considerations of. Relocating it to the greatest practical extent. You know. Don't really hold a lot of water in this case.
Well, the additional height have an impact in thinking about. The relocation, because they're bringing it up two feet, did you say?
It's actually gonna be closer to three.
That'd be considered a relocation, moving that. Really.
A vertical. That's a really good question. Usually when we're talking about um. Relocation, we're talking about horizontal relocation specifically to um. Distances from um, defined setbacks, I mean, and where we're within the seventy five foot set. Setback or within the twenty five foot setback. Usually we're keying in with you to those kind of setbacks. Um, however, we do have vertical compliance with you too, I mean, like um. But then again, uh, you know, a lot of that is kind of covered through the, the D E P and Army Corps. And uh, construction permitting and code enforcement review, like, you know, is it. You know, are, are you above the highest annual tide line, what's the floodplain elevation? Is the lowest part of the horizontal structure a certain distance above that? But uh, in most cases, we're talking about horizontal displacement. Compliance with the. The se- section four point three point five and four point three point six.
Look at your last sentence and what you read just right.
Yes. The last sentence of what I just read was if the total footprint of the original structure can be relocated or reconstructed. Beyond the required setback area, no portion of the relocated reconstructed. Structure shall be replaced or constructed at less than the setback requirement for the new structure. Well. Yeah, I. I think I would hope the board understands the context of that sentence and. This, the specific context. Of this reconstruction being again so site specific, I mean, why would we ask them to? Move it back if the flagpole is. Is there? And can be there.
Flagpole can be there, yeah, do they, do they really need that big? That's what they gotta justify, because they need that big area. Around the flagpole.
It's existing, they're not expanding it. There. It's, it's somewhat in, well, more than somewhat, it's integrated into your shoreline stabilization there, I would think. With the um. The proposed reconstruction of the um. Retaining wall, so there's, there's another. Site specific criteria.
Well, about this last. The section one.
Yeah, so. The last sentence?
Yeah.
In no case shall a structure be relocated in manner that causes the structure to be more non-conforming. So they're not making it for non-conforming. Now they're working, we're working within the existing footprint um. You know, I, this is a. This is a first, by the way. So um.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that, I mean, the other piece of this is that that um. In in that paragraph, the first one that you read under five, relocation or talks about erosion. Yeah, I think this is a perfect example, as we know, there's gonna be a lot of traffic there. Um, it's right adjacent to the walkway to the pier and the flagpole access is is pretty frequent. Um, I think it's. Pretty unlikely that vegetation is gonna survive very well there, it would have to be managed and redone quite frequently. Oh, and so providing a walkway there is gonna help us prevent exposed soil and erosion. I also think that it's not that much different than the walkways. And we're allowed to have walkways to access buildings to access the the pier. And this provides us access to the to the flagpole.
Yeah, so as as we reviewed these these performance standards before um. And we've had counsel chime in on this. The application does not have to successfully meet all of these. And um. And some of these, these are have scaled relevance to. The context of the application, so, you know, when we. You know, in the past, when we discussed these kind of things like, you know, the size of lot, okay, you've got half an acre here and sure you can rip a flagpole. And that thing probably somewhere else onsite, you know, given the size of the lot, the slope of the land. Well. In in this case, I mean, you guys are really kind of. Proposing to decrease the slope of the land, we're not, we're not like on. We're not on a coast, in a coastal bluff situation where you're, you know, if we were to ask you to move this, you're gonna be. Significantly impacting the bluff, and so you probably should keep it where it is, but um. I think one of the really relevant things here is the potential for soil erosion and um, you know, if you. You know, that's all part of the the existing um. Uh shoreline stabilization, right?
That's good, can you remind me how much higher that little structure that you're gonna replace?
Hmm.
How much higher from, it was, was it breached during the scan?
Yeah, there was water actually in that area and the slab was undermined, you could see underneath it, there was quite a bit of material, in fact, I think that. I've included a picture of my book like that in the stores.
Yeah.
Um, and so right now, that elevation is around, we're around ten. And we're proposing to have it be thirty.
And and if if the goal is to prevent further erosion and damage. How do you calculate all these days, I mean, seriously, how do you calculate that thirteen is gonna probably? Yeah, I should pick the number.
Um.
I mean, it's not a matter of curiosity, then he has such.
Well, I mean, the the flood elevation there is twelve. Um, so it gets us above the base flood elevation. And um, we we actually looked at multiple options for one elevation that here was going to go to.
Yeah.
Um, and took into consideration the elevation of the of the pier going to the other side. Um, and also the aesthetics, you know, what's it gonna look like if it's five, six feet higher than it is now?
Right, right.
And then what's that gonna do to the slope of the gangways? Um, and so we, you know, try to. Balance all of those, pick a height that we felt, the other thing we're doing is changing the framing on this a little bit. So right now, there's multiple layers of framing, there's the pile caps and then we're able to reduce that structure depth, so we're raising it. But we're also reducing the overall structure depth. So that means that the underside of the structure is even that much higher than the current. So by scaling that up a little bit, we get a little more protection before the underside is hit by waves arising tonight. Um. So I mean, that's, that was the balance, the other, the other balance was starting at South Shore Road. And doing a a slope that's one foot and twenty, which is accessibility. Um, what's that do to get us to the door on the uh north side of the building and then? What elevation does that get us to coming down to the pier? So there were a lot of pieces to that puzzle um. To get to this elevation, and we also looked at what the elevation of the water was. During the both of those January storms, and this gets us to about two feet or higher than what those were. So we felt like it got us some protection for at least some a lot of time. The issue with going extremely high now is is the gangways, I mean. It gets really steep at low tide, or you've gotta have a gangway that's so heavy you can barely take it in and out.
And in in this case, too, the um. You're not putting the slab back, you're putting.
No, we're not putting the same structure back, we're trying to make it a more permeable situation by having stepping stones with gaps in between and. A little. Less industrial than that slab, you know, something that's gonna blend and be more aesthetic.
So back to Anne's question, in some ways, the you're lessening the non-conformity because you're. Increasing the vertical relationship to the original relocation. You're increasing the permanent permeability of the of the structure.
Sidney's hands up.
Oh, thank you. So despite closing public comments, Sydney, do you have a specific question for where we are at?
I hope so, um, we had a a project going on. From before the storms and we raised a lot of money and um. There was a plan for the widening of the whatever we call it, the long pier and all that. And I don't know how this project. Connects with that one, and I'm just wondering if they do and um. If that confuses the issue.
Your question sounds like one of contacts, like how does this? This proposed uh reconstruction of the of the flag patio. Relate to the pier?
Rel relates to the former project that the former plans that were done, which actually we looked at. At the end of the meeting today that were the little blue and blue drawings that were next with leaning up the leaning up against this the fleet house. And they were done a couple of years ago, and I'm just wondering what the relationship is between the plans that were done. Then and what they are now after those two storms made such a difference.
So you can see in the plan that's right there, there's some steps.
Yeah, it's just speak up to the owl.
Oh, sorry, so. In the original plans. That flagpole area was intended to stay as is, and you can see on that rendering that there was um. An idea of putting some circular steps to get down into that space. But out yeah, storms in January and the damage that was done and the fact that the slab was undermined. Um, it just didn't seem to make sense to leave that damaged down at that elevation.
Hmm.
Um, not to mention that's. It's just, it's not as functional. Uh, by raising it up, building the new walls around it and bringing the elevation equal to the pathway rather than a quick drop down into that hole. Um. It just seemed to be the right thing to do for the long term. Where we could go back to that and not have to be having this discussion, but it just doesn't seem to make sense.
It might be a safety problem.
Right, it's, yeah, there's a lot of, there were a lot of reasons that that, as we need, once we decided how high we we need to be. But that just wasn't a great.
I think there was an accessibility.
Yeah, there were a lot of issues with doing it that way.
I guess the problem I have is that it's an overall general question and not just one specifically, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Sid. Okay.
All right. So, I don't know, this is kind of the. The gray area here and so we need to. Kind of put this into context of pros and cons, you know, and. The pros and cons of uh us. You know, always thinking in the affirmative of um. Allowing this reconstruction to remain in place, however. Increased in height and permeability. In its presence, present location. So. And, you know, this, you know, this is a great land use advisory committee. Look to to, I wish we had like more specific, like a checklist to drill down through here because. This is the same kind of circular discussion between four point three five and four point three six we have every single time.
Meaning with all of them.
There you go. Yeah, we're we're, again, the review criteria, non-conforming structures is in section four point three five, yet. We're talking about reconstruction, which is four point three six, so.
That's for jurisdictional, right?
Yeah.
You guys have jurisdiction over it, because it's complete placement, right?
It's.
Four, three, five.
Then we gotta.
Your criteria.
Mm hmm.
And determine whether the building or structure relocation is every five percent, you would get. Side of lots, open land and make findings on all of them.
Yeah, so. So again, we're. This is a review in 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 the context greatest practical stat that, you know, they. And with that, we've got a unique um situation here where the patio is very. Um. Not only site specific, but function specific, and we've got a. Essentially a flagpole. Saying hey, X marks the spot here and. We're not talking about the relocation flag, we're talking about the relocation of the patio and I think in the context. That is, again, it. Doesn't make sense, but um. So we our findings, our initial findings need to kind of be keyed into. Determining whether the building, the structural relocation meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. And when um, and again, thinking about how we would be constructing a motion towards this. We have to have a finding on the size of the lot. Well, I think we've we've talked about that, but well, the. The size of lot doesn't really help the cause here because, you know, they've got half an acre and yes, you could. Probably find another spot for the patio. Then it's a moot point because it's not relative to the flagpole and surround and the surrounding.
There's no way to consider this. At the same time, and the pier and the and the reconstruction along the inner cove.
Yeah, why?
Like that's, feels like it's.
Yeah, it's all.
Low altogether.
Oh, it absolutely does, I mean, so there's there's a continuity consideration there, you know, with the. You know, when we're talking about the the existing retain, you know, sea wall they have there and the continuity of that. And the existing shoreline stabilization and and even the proposed raise of the pier. You know, this is all stitched together. Uh, and. But again, we've got these review criteria that we need to think about how to tie those considerations into.
But if it had been not a separate application of people, they had applied with the erosion.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think.
You have to roll like stabilization, that's allowed. You can have retaining walls. The marine structures will are dependent, so it needs to go over the wire, this is just a construction. That's wrapped around a flagpole. Like a view, like an old. Overview, like, so we stand there and like. Not connected to that retaining wall that comes around.
It is, but in terms of our review process, it isn't.
Yeah.
So. Dale.
Yes. Well, I'm also wondering about, you mentioned in some of your documentation, the. The tradition and historical aspects of the use of this. Flagpole, which is. Um. So you might call it a cultural aspect, like a site.
Absolutely.
Um.
You want to come best to have a flagpole, it's required.
No, no.
So again, let's let's think about this in the context of the review criteria, the size of the lot, the slope of the land. The potential for soil erosion. Location of other structures. The septic system is a moot point because you guys are on town sewer. Um.
So it is, it this, the size of the law. Yes, that could directly put a simple cells.
Yes.
The slope of the land. This will be. Renovated or or replaced to harmonize with the slope of the land. That will be part of the other aspects of the.
Absolutely, that's in their favor to, you know, it 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 is in the application's favor to. Propose it being raised.
The potential for erosion is significant if that existing structure is. Further damaged or if it's left as it is, um, and the puzzle to. Pay to. Surface it as they are, um, will minimize or significantly reduce the potential for soil erosion erosion in the event of. When others significant storms happen, um, it is logically located to the. Other structures, the the pier in particular of this property on.
Its impact on vegetation, it would be potentially greater because you'd have the. Their original location then, and if this was relocated, then we're just impacting the site that much more.
Right. Because they're gonna have to do something to that corner, if if the flagpole's not there, they're gonna have to do something to that corner anyway and for the.
You would be increasing the area of impact on the property. By relocating it.
So I, that's the best that I can do.
Hmm.
Um, if you want the form of a motion.
So typically, we, yes, kind of condense that. Into a motion.
The finding of facts in this, on this application are that. The size of the the slope of the land. As it will be reconfigured.
We'll do it, do it in order.
Okay, well, the size of the lot. Okay. So, the size of the lot is not. Huge there, don't they already have a lot of this lot covered beyond? Isn't the lot covered beyond what? You would normally allow if you were starting over.
Yes.
Yes, right, so you, so you're basically increasing the coverage of the lot in order to move the flagpole. Because you're still gonna have something there in that in that area, correct?
Unless they planted geraniums.
Okay. Um. So I guess finding the fact that the 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 continued location of this flagpole, the reconstruction of this. That is in there, you know, but. That is three is those, if it's just relocated, they have to. Replant vegetation. Yes, yes, yes. So the size of the lot is not, is not. So the size of the lot is not, as a matter of fact, the size of the lot is not dispositive of the, I'm fond of it.
Be specific, the point five one acre lot size.
Yeah, but when you have said that it could, that it could allow for moving that.
It could, and that's okay that we say that.
All right. Good. So the point five one of the, as a findings factor of the point five one acre lot size could permit the moving of a flagpole to a different location.
Flag, flagpole, the surrounding patio and a flagpole.
Right. Um, to a different location on the lot.
Okay, well done.
Okay. And the point five one acre lot could accommodate the flagpole and its surrounding and its surroundings in a different location.
Are we referring to this as a patio or what's the, what term?
What?
Structure, it's, this is.
The structure.
Why don't, why don't we use the term structure?
Flagpole structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
The flagpole and surrounding structure.
Okay. Um. So we're finding as a matter of fact, that the, make sure you've got my garbled word in here that the point five one acres lot size would allow the moving of the flagpole and its surrounding structure to a different location on the lot.
Well, then just.
Yeah, correct. I don't know how therefore. Okay. Yeah, I don't know what we do with the slope of the land then.
I, I got an idea.
Well, that.
So relative to the slope of the land that, um.
Is this a finding? Not yet.
Yeah, we're scaling, we're just kind of.
Wordsmithing.
Yeah.
Cause you can't tell.
So I think there, there, by increasing the vertical uh, the vertical elevation of the structure, we're decreasing uh, any conflict with the future improved slope of the land.
Correct.
Or its present location.
And you want to do, did you get that? You didn't want, oh, you said it wasn't.
Sorry, I know, I know.
You were wordsmithing.
Yeah. So the, the, the proposed improvement of the structure will improve.
Vertical elevation. The raised vertically elevation of a proposed structure.
Will improve the slope of the land.
In, in its present location.
Yes. Yes.
Will be more, more consistently uh.
Tied in.
Tied into the existing slope of the land or the proposed.
Right. They thereby reducing, contributing to the reduction of the potential for soil erosion.
Mm hmm. I think, I think we should say though, too, that, um, given it's it's proposed um, location in its existing footprint, it will also better integrate into the um, established shoreline stabilization or proposed shorelines.
Right. A- and the rebuilding of the structure, the flagpole structure in the manner proposed will improve the potential will reduce the potential for soil erosion and stabilize and help stabilize the shoreline in that location.
Additionally, the the change in structure type to a more permeable structure.
Right.
Will in, will lessen potential for soil erosion.
I'm not even sure where we are in the sentence grammatically.
I think we're in the context of soil erosion, but, and Heidi's going to read it back to us.
Oh.
After we.
I, I don't have anything that makes sense.
Yeah.
This is what I've written. It's bits and pieces. Proposed improvement in structure will be more consistent with the proposed local land contributing to the reduction of the potential for soil erosion. Given its proposed location in the existing footprint, it will be, it will better integrate into the established shoreline and a a rebuild of something that sounded great, but I didn't catch it will reduce potential for soil erosion additionally change. Um, the change of the uh, construction material to a more permeable. That's all I got.
Sorry. Yeah, no, it's. Potential for soil erosion will be used by rebuilding the structure to better protect the adjacent land from storm damage to better allow for the permeability, to allow for the better permeability and drainage of that area. And to better integrate into the shoreline protection measures that will be taken, the, the adjacent shoreline protection measures. So any clip better? It's focusing on the erosion.
When I read it.
Yeah, you know, I'm thinking too, we need to key it into the section two of that in, in. You know, I think we should say something like per for the review criteria of section four point three point five in determining whether the building um, relocation meets the setback to the greatest practical extent. The planning board has considered the size of lot.
Which is.
Which is.
Five one acres.
Yeah, the slope of the land, which whatever we said.
Which will.
The, the prep, potential for soil erosion, whichever we, so it's.
Right. So where, 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 what do you want from me at this?
You, you're, you're getting it. So you know, the, the septic system is, is not.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And it's, it, the septic system location does not apply because the property is on town sewer. And then lastly, the, the type and amount of vegetation to be removed.
I mean, a type and amount will be, will be minimal. Uh, will be, will be um.
None.
Will be let, will be, yes, will be less by leaving it at where it is, will be reduced by leaving it where it is.
So the, the goal of this motion is to evidence that, you, you know, the the sum of all this, we're, we're, the, the sum of this prod, of these review criteria by keeping it in place. It's going to be greater in terms of having less impact on all of this than asking them to move it.
Right. Because they're still going to have to fortify that.
So maybe, maybe a statement like that, then it's a summary statement to your motion. So kind of part of the she will.
Yeah, therefore, right, right. Therefore, the board, so we are therefore the board finds um, that the application, that, that the application meets the setback to the greatest practical extent.
I think it's as simple as that. Can I check it that? Yeah.
No. No. I'm not even sure where to start. Uh, okay.
Can we, can we start by saying what section we're in?
Okay. I hope this.
I've seen.
You started with per the review of quite, uh, for the, for the review criteria of section four point three point five in determining whether relocation uh, to the greatest practical extent. You, you said that, yeah. And then we went to.
The planning.
The planning board considers the size of the lot, which is point five one acres.
Yeah.
The slope of the land, which will be which will be raised and into which this will be optimally integrated.
Integrated, yes. At the same location.
Uh, which will be raised, I'm sorry, and
and opt, will it be often, this will be optimally integrated into.
The structure will be up to.
The, the structure will be optimally integrated into the slope of the land. Um. And the potential for soil erosion will be reduced. I don't know if it's minimized, but it will be substantially reduced by rebuilding the structure to better protect that a vulnerable portion of the land and to better stabilize the shorefront. And to better allow, sorry, uh, better, better protect a vulnerable, vulnerable portion of land and better.
I missed that, the one in between.
Stabilize, stabilize the shorefront. And better allow for, and by the manner of construction, better allow for drainage. Orderly drainage. In that location.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you're not done. The location of others, the, the, comma, the location of other structures on the property, it, the, it is the location of other structures on the property.
I got something. By keeping it in its present locate, keeping the structure in its present location will decrease.
Well, hold on.
Its proximity to others, other structures, because when they move everything back, it's.
Right. Will decrease what was that?
The proximity.
But it's also, it's also like the most rational location. I mean, it's the most, the most, the most practical location.
Sure.
And the most, the most practical and.
We, we can say that after we get through the descriptive, you know.
Well, it's a, it's a provision in the, the location of the structures on the property.
What do you got?
All right.
Okay, what I have so far is by keeping the structure in its present location will decrease proximity.
To the other structures on the property.
Okay, well, you can see the.
Well, we could be more specific and say to the um, proposed, uh, the proposed building locations.
While maintaining its relationship to its historical relationship to the here.
Marine structure.
Right.
To the pier or to the marine structure?
I think we should say marine structure.
Um, and we also need to say the location, the, the location of the subject system and other on site, so is not relevant.
Because.
So. Well.
The property is served by town sewer.
Okay. This is a big one. And the type of amount of vegetation to be removed to accomplish this real, real. And there is no vegetation that will be removed to accomplish this relocation. Well, this is not.
Therefore.
Therefore. Well done. I'm still finishing vegetation. The word finds, therefore, the board finds this application meets the provisions of four point three non-conforming structures point five relocation. As a matter of law. That's close.
You get it.
Just want to give Alan a chance to second.
I'm ready.
I know.
And I think we should also just key into a reference to four point three six that the, um, replacement structure is, um, is not any larger than the original structure. Correct.
The board also finds that the replacement structure is, is no larger finds pursuant to four point three point six, that the replacement structure is the same size as the existing structure.
Just be. And therefore.
As a matter, and therefore, as a matter of law.
And therefore, therefore, the reconstruction meets the setback to the greatest practical, practical extent in addition to the review criteria in section four point three five. Why I say that at the beginning, so you're already in the context of that.
Right.
Don't need to say that. What would be, you know, it's just like the, just chicken or the egg, not in your west, four point three five and four point three six, like in both are as you read down there and they're both bouncing back and forth between each other and cross reference each. Not relocation, no, it's just, well, it's being relocated. Yeah. Being reconstructed, what, three feet higher?
Well, there is another, there is another question, is it? Is it, is it, is this the hard provision to use, the relocation provision?
Well, in the past, you get, with the board has historically, yes, used four point three five. So this is being relocated up. So it is being relocated up, yeah, and so when, yes. And when we've been been doing things. When we have, we we have been ha- you know, having discussions of relocation relative to. The context and reconstruction. So again, I, that's where it just gets.
And we concluded that relocation is not necessary.
Relocation is not necessary.
Oh, right, per review of the criteria of section four point three point five and determining whether relocation is. Determining whether relocation to the greatest practical extent. That's all I have there. Relocation needs to set back to the greatest. Uh per review of criteria of section four, three, five, and determining whether relocation needs to step back. Uh to the greatest if practical extent. Summary of review criteria.
The board has considered.
The size of the law. I'm sorry, I'm just, yeah, I need to make sense, there are three pages of this. Okay, per review of the criteria of section four, three, five, in determining whether the relocation needs to step back to the greatest practical extent. Um the board. Summary of review criteria greater in terms of having less impact. The size of the, the board consider the size of a lot of the five uh point five one acres. The slope of land, which will be raised, and the structure will be optimally integrated into the slope of the land. The potential for soil erosion will be reduced by rebuilding. Structure, the structure to better protect the vulnerable portion of land and better stabilize the shorefront. And by a manner uh cons. Oh, um. A manner of construction to better allow for drainage. The location of other structures on the property by keeping the structure in its present location will decrease proximity to other structures. To the proposed, oh, okay, I'm sorry, uh. Decrease proximity to other proposed building locations while maintaining its historical relationship to the marine structure. The location of the septic system is not relevant, the property is served by town sewer. There is no vegetation to be removed, therefore, the board finds the application meets the provisions of section. Four point three, nonconforming, I can't read. Uh you well, you had a nonconforming structure. Not performing structures, section five relocation as a matter of law. Uh with regard to section, I don't know if this is a separate motion or the same one, but with regard to section. Four, three, six, the board finds uh pursuant to section four, three, six, sorry, replacement of the structure. Uh replacement structure is the same size of the existing structure, therefore. The reconstruction meets the relocation standards in addition to review criteria in section four point three point five.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, and that's exactly how. These motions get cobbled together because we don't have like clear. Pathway here to follow, but um. Guys have any comments? Is that it? Yeah. Are we there?
I am, I I I can't, I can't honestly tell if we're there or not, honestly.
I feel like we're there. I could go ahead if you look, if you wish.
I know that you know.
You can do it, Alan. Any further discussion on this motion? Right, all those in favor? Opposed? And then uh, do do we need a final motion on that, or is that? Kimberley, is that usually suffice?
And that's all you, no, that's.
Now we got it, now we got it.
It's a lot of work.
Perfect thing to pencil in for Noel. We did. To think about. Flight polls important, yes, gotta have, gotta have the flight. Thank you. Birdies must fly. This one's a little, here we go again, all right. At item five on the agenda, we have section four point three five relocation, so bear with.
I'm ready.
A nonconforming structure may be relocated within the boundaries of the parcel on. On which the structure is located, provided that the site of relocation. Conforms to all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent as determined by the planning board or code of. Enforcement officer, in no case shall a structure be relocated in a manner that causes the structure. To be more nonconforming. So tonight, we have the Northeast Harbor Fleet Incorporated, Agent Gartley Endorsky Engineering. And survey incorporated, William Gartley is here. With location forty eight South Shore Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map twenty three lot for. The zone is Shoreland Residential One, and this is about relocating the existing fleet house. And we have determined that the others have been notified and. And this has been advertised uh June thirteenth. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Gartley to tell us about the. Relocation of the existing fleet house.
The good news is we're posing to relocate the building. And in this case, we're moving it back approximately forty feet from the southerly shoreline. And we're moving it back um from the west of the shoreline to be in compliance with the twenty five foot setback. And we're basically moving it to the limit of the uh setback from the road and. The property line setback, um there's trees to the east that uh. Kind of were planning to save, so we're trying not to move it any further to the east. And it moves us outside of the floodplain and allows us to raise it above the floodplain. And we feel like we've moved it back to the greatest practical extent to uh be in compliance with all the other setbacks. The bathhouse isn't moving, so that's a structure that we don't want to be any closer to, it's already. Our proposed new location is quite close to you are able to see today.
So you're outside of the twenty five foot setback, you're still. Mostly within the seventy five foot setback. And then you're not within the setback from the South Shore Road. My reading.
Yeah, which is a fifty foot.
You're elevating the structure out of the floodplain, correct? Okay, so I'll. I'll open it up with public comment. What do you think, Sydney?
I think I better stay um muted because I just don't seem to get the, the um drift of the bigger picture. When to speak.
But not go for it. Now's your, now's the time.
Now, okay, I suggest. I suggest that we think about the future, about the next one hundred years, and I think that this fleet house should be moved into the parking lot. We have extremely intelligent people around us, which we're very, should be very thankful for. Um we have some very difficult people to work with, meaning the state in some instances. We have um this, the University of Maine in RNO, which is great, we have the College of the Atlantic, who is great. And they've all told us what's coming, and I think that we should pay attention. And I think that it's very thoughtless of us to think that we are. Going to do something for forty five or twenty five years, and that's going to be enough. It certainly isn't.
I'm gonna handle, hand that one over to the applicant to answer.
But I think that's. It's not the only section that we're reviewing in the ordinance right now.
Yeah, you know, Sydney had, you know, we always welcome public comment, but I would say that one's a little bit. Off the. Subject of the task we're here for, and that's um relative to the review of section four point three five. Or four point three six here, but um if you.
It sounds like it's an argument better suited to within the organization. At this point. I'm not saying it's not an argument, I'm just talking about venue.
I agree, and I appreciate your um politeness and and response.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from the public, questions? Do you have your hand up earlier there in the back row, maybe?
Oh, yeah, but I didn't ask you later.
Okay, you go, gone once, twice. All right, I'm gonna close public comments, and let's get on with the review here again. This is not a conditional use application, so we don't have a checklist. I wish we had a checklist. So here we are back in section four point three five.
The board. We've used this application pursuant to four point three point five. As it pertains to the relocation of the fleet house.
The greatest practical extent.
And the board finds that. The site of relocation conforms to setback, all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. Can you say that one more time, I have, the board finds. That the site, the site of relocation conforms to all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. Because. The structure is moved back.
Well, remember, we have to key it into the review criteria.
Well, I was gonna describe the facts, is that, that's the, just the ordinance I just read.
Keep, keep going now.
Okay, all right. But a- and finds that. Language pertaining to subsurface sewage disposal systems is not applicable because. There is municipal sewage.
On town sewer.
On town sewer.
About the size of the lot.
The side, well, I'm getting that, that's the next paragraph. The size of the lot is point five one acres. The slope of the land. Move, moving to the re- relocating the, the building will. Bring it up slope from its present location. It will. Minimize, the completed project will minimize the potential for soil erosion. It, the proposed location. Will. Integrate. And relate successfully to other structures. Okay, I just one second. On the property. And. The type and amount of vegetation to be removed. Is. Minimized and will be replaced by. Comparable and competitor plantings on the site. comparable and I'm sorry, what was the word? Well, I said competitor, but, oh, okay, on the site. Do you want me to go through the tree removal and so forth? Section. And that, and five.
Could talk about that.
The plan. specifies adequate replanting. Of native vegetation. To compensate for destroyed vegetation. And meets. Well, do you want me, I mean, here we go, all this business of the different types of trees, so.
No.
I mean, if we're moving a minimal amount of trees, you could say that. Right, and they're replanting. Well, trees and other vegetation, but. Vegetation will be in, vegetation on the property will be in pants, so it will result in. The completion of the project, suited vegetation. Now, you want in this. Discourse to discuss. How they've moved it and how how they.
Yeah, so that, that was the next level I was gonna say is now you gotta really quantify this a bit more, you gotta say that. You know, in the. Relative to the, a couple of key things there, you know, relative to the proposed relocation, it's. The nonconformity is being lessened by. The removal of the exist, the, the structure will no longer be within twenty, the twenty five foot setback.
Right.
You know, you're increasing the vertical elevation of it, so it's out of the floodplain.
Right.
And then you're also staying out of the fifty foot setback from South Shore Road.
Right, right. So the board further finds that the proposed. Relocation site. Moves the structure. Out of the turns by foot floodplain zone. It's not the shoreline zone.
The shoreline setback.
So thank you, the shoreline setback. Respects the fifty foot setback on the South Shore Road. Improves. The floodplain, the raises the building above the floodplain elevation. And. Implies with. Implies with the, it's just, it's a twenty-five foot setback on the, on the.
Yeah.
What is this, on the west side?
The side yard setbacks.
Yeah, right.
Moving the building outside the east twenty-five percent.
Yes.
Also, okay.
And.
I'm sorry, which one's that one?
It's like east.
The east side yard.
Oh, okay, side yard, yeah.
You know, and if I'm not mistaken, uh, as you're moving it back, you have that. The current structure is entirely within the seventy-five foot setback, currently, so when they move it back. There's a portion of the structure that technically isn't in the seventy-five foot setback, so in the. In the globality of reducing nonconformity.
Right.
That counts too.
Right. And a portion of the relocated house.
Structure.
Structure will no longer be within the seventy-five foot setback.
Is it the shoreline zones at that?
The seventy-five foot.
I just said that a portion of the fleet house. Will be outside seventy-five foot shoreline setback. I mean, it says something like. The greatest portion possible in this land, but.
I will have to say that later.
Later, what else are we saying?
Well, then you have to have your contingency statement. And that the, you remember, we have to tie it into four point three six to that, the proposed. Or we're not increasing the footprint.
You don't need to do four point three point six on this one.
They don't.
You can relocate a building within the five years of a lot.
Therefore, the board finds the provisions of four point three point five. Have been met.
To the greatest.
To the greatest extent possible.
Greatest practical.
Thank you, the greatest practical extent. Foster. We're gonna leave it at that, so. I think I'm gonna say I'm done.
Quantify, don't embellish. What do you think, Heidi?
Is that any more tolerable than last time?
That is faster than that. I'm gonna start even our board pursuant to section five point three point five as it pertains to relocation.
Four point three point five.
Four point, I'm sorry, four point three point five as it pertains to the relocation of the fleet house. Uh, site of relocation. Conforms to, or no, meets um. All setback, I'm sorry, meets all, meets all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. The, the board finds that the language pertaining to the sewer is not applicable. Uh, the property is on town sewer. The size of the lot is point five one acres, the slope of land relocating. Regarding the slope of land relocating the building will bring it up slope from the present location and minimize the potential for soil erosion. The proposed location will integrate and relate successfully to other structures on the property. The type and amount of vegetation to be removed is minimized and will be replaced by. Uh, comparable and compensatory vegetation on the site. We have two more small statements about that. I don't know if we want them in or not. The plan specifies. Uh, adequately planting and um, adequate replanting of natural vegetation. To compensate for destroyed vegetation.
You can leave that.
Yeah, okay, and vegetation on the property will be enhanced. Uh, relative to the proposed relocation, uh, the nonconformity is lessened, the structure will no longer be. In the setback, uh, will no longer be in the setback, and that doesn't make sense. The board further finds the proposed relocation site.
Will not, we can say will no longer be within the twenty-five foot setback.
Well, I think we say it here. For the plans of, those relocated. Site moves the structure out of the twenty-five foot shoreline setback. Uh, I'm sorry. Oh, um. Over respects the fifty-foot setback on the South Shore Road, raises the building above the floodplain elevation. And moves the building out of uh, twenty-five foot east side yard setback. Um, a portion of the structure is moved outside of the seventy-five foot. Shoreland setback. The board finds provisions of section four point three point five have been met to the greatest practical extent possible.
Alan.
Second that?
Hi, one question.
Yes.
Is there any increase in lock coverage?
No.
For this proposal?
No.
The board for, so where we put that in, the board for the fines, there'll be no increased lock coverage.
Um, may you probably want that before, then there's a four point three point five within that, yes. Uh, the board further finds, I'm sorry. Now it's gone from nineteen.
There's no increase.
Knowing these lock coverage.
That will be more ten of those.
Okay, Alan seconds.
Would be acceptable, man.
Any further discussion? For sure, Tracy. All right, all those in favor, I oppose. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's.
That's a lot, there's a lot of project.
Yeah.
We, we don't sign anything on that, and there's nothing to sign.
You have checklist in front of you.
We have the checklist from the first one.
Yeah, we said you have a checklist in front of you, right?
No, I, no.
Who wants these maps?
They're still on the table.
They had a person who was an excavator in the winter, but they made it so a golf cart, they're up and down there. So it's handicap.
Really, it's pretty big.
We need some marching.
It is pretty much.
Take off, double take, yeah. Thank you very much, you're a masterful. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a mutual friend in Brahman. Yeah, good. I kind of put her on the path of my, fact as a landscape architect, so I appreciate that you guys are down.
The world needs Mark.
Yeah, isn't she great?
She's great.
Her passions.
I love seeing that already, you know, and she's, I hope she sticks with it, and she does, thank you very much for your time. Well, she's got the right attitude.
Yeah, she's a, and I, I hope she took advantage of, while she's over in London.
I know.
Looking at things differently, thank you.
I don't know, I don't see it for that.
Uh, does Jack still need that?
Yes, so. Yes, hey, yeah, so moving on, so we're, we're.
We're gonna finish the meeting.
Yeah, we're on item. Oh, you have tonight, other, let's get an update from the land use zoning ordinance.
The land use zoning ordinance committee filed to the reality that we're not gonna be able to attend meetings in the summer, so we postponed, we canceled the June meeting. We are canceling the July and, and August meeting, we will reconvene starting on the seventeenth. I am in the absence of a chair, I'm gonna continue to act as chair for the summer. We will, what I hope to be able to do, and in fact tomorrow I meet, I want to talk to Kim. And tomorrow I meet with Noel for the first time, and he and I would like to.
We members.
Work over the summer to organize to the best of our abilities, some of the work that. We hope will then allow the board to approach it in as organized a manner as possible. We obviously have some things to add to it at midnight. Uh, to get for consideration, um, and I wanna meet with Kim and talk with her. We will establish the chair is actually gonna be when we meet starting in, in um. September, I think that's also the seventeenth. Um, I may be proposing that there be at least a couple of twice monthly meetings to sort of make up for what we're not doing. The summers, well, it depends on what we think our workload needs to be as we get back, but I think that, I mean, I'd seriously consider that.
One question Meredith had, wanted me to convey tonight, was that how, how is the. Luzo committee prioritizing what they're reviewing in the context of what's gonna come back to the planning board? Like, how, how do you guys like say, hey, look, here's. You know, here's critical item one, you know, let's get the subdivision, you know. Ordinance, we, we were, uh, one of the things of it is keeping compliant with main law. Yeah, as it changes.
Yeah, that we have to change, yeah.
Well, we did come up with a work list at the beginning of the year, like right. After town meeting, um, and I think we're gonna need to refine that, prioritize that. We've obviously got some things to talk about. Um, did you hear you didn't have any conditions on any of those, right?
No.
It's the very first one, just the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the condition we use, yeah. Um. And we're just gonna, we're, we're just gonna do the best we can to try to make things ready for people who. Get to work on stuff in the fall, because it just, people just weren't gonna be able to come to the meetings, and everybody, all the emails I got back when I said we can't send a meeting was like, oh, thank God. Thank you very much.
How big is your committee, Ken?
Well, it, I don't know exactly off the top of my head the number, I mean, it doesn't include Gary anymore. Um, but it's at least a half dozen people, but they're just not coming in the summer, that's just. She's not gonna get there. I mean, Katrina said she couldn't come, I thought, okay. Because some of the others are sort of like, yeah, what they do, they do is not come to the meeting.
They mentioned that the summer is just not.
Yeah.
But, and we've done that in the past, and we do, we had met, because everybody's.
Live and learn, live and learn, so, but what we have to do is figure out. Try to more rational figure out what our workload is, and then with the time we have, how do we get it done?
Right.
And. Well, obviously, there's triaging involved, because there always is. So when I, Kim, when I had it coming, so that's it for my update. Um, sure, if you need. Um, I have a, I do want to hope to meet this, see if I can find some of Kim's spare time.
That's maybe your notes, right?
No.
Hmm, oh, yeah, yeah. Girl, I was wondering where those went. Better ask him.
It's actually into that. Will I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, well, we, we have one more item, we've got the.
We do, but this gentleman's not here.
Meeting, great, so I just, I gotta ask him about that.
Yeah.
Because.
You can't meet and greet if someone is not here.
You're like our applicant to be here.
Yeah.
Although, when I was being announced, my first time I came to a meeting I was supposed to come to, and. Um, meetings had been canceled in terms of the weather, but I didn't know that, no one told me, so I'm waiting, like, oh, this is weird, I know I'm at the right place, it's the right time. And eventually I went home and was like, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's not the situation here.
Kimberly, one question. And so we have an applicant to the board, however, the words consensus is that it would be nice for the applicant to be present.
For a meeting, great.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think we're going to.
Table it?
Yeah.
Table that.
I totally agree, I'm, I'm. It wasn't on anybody's, it wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, yes, it is.
I got another one, I guess.
There, yes, it is.
It's on there. I had a date for myself.
I could make a motion for.
Yeah, I agree, it should be, it should be here.
Table it's the next meeting.
Yes, ta- table it until the next meeting, and hopefully the applicant will.
So how, how will he be notified?
Yes.
Did you sign the conditional use permit, or did you do the signature for the conditional use?
I think I handed that over to you.
You can just sign a conditional use.
Yeah, because I have a copy of the blank.
How is Daniel Burke going to be notified?
Well, that's a lot now. Did you, the four point six point three, did you sign that one?
Yeah, there's, they're both here.
So I have the four point three point five, Alan just gave me.
Here's that. All the conditional use ones in there.
Good.
But can Jen notify him?
Yeah, we will, we'll know.
All right, so let's have a motion to table that, so.
Hey, wait, that goes. I think that's the regiment.
Uh, that could be off my.
No, put it in the.
This looks like next meeting.
Okay, I thought I heard Alan.
I make a motion to table the meet and greet with our new alternate member till our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor? Opposed? There you go.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
You guys hold on.
A motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Bye. Bye.
Bye.